Okay, well, welcome everyone to Fresno City Council Meeting of 1:30 PM on May 16th. With that, we'll start with roll call.
Councilmember Brettafield.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Asparza.
Present.
Soraya. Arias.
Present.
Capillo.
I am here, thank you. Next will be the invocation. Father Joaquin, are you here? I do not see Father Joaquin.
I think Councilmember Brettafield can lead us in prayer.
Okay. Are there any volunteers? Assistant City Manager Shad, I know you've led us in prayer. Alright. To the rescue, Jerry, thank you.
No, I do not, or I'd be praying for those as well.
The man.
Okay, folks, how about we bow our heads in reverence of our Lord? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this group and this body that are gathered together. We thank you for the ability to be here. Sometimes we don't share the same opinions, but we do appreciate the fact that we have the ability to do that in a public forum. We pray that you be with every person here, that they would have the knowledge and the ability to make good decisions and manage a city for all of its people. We thank you for all you've done and given this city, in your most precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Let's face the flag and we'll salute, ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Jerry, well done. Next, we're going to go to the agenda. City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are several changes to the agenda. The agenda has been revised to add and delete appointments to file ID 191682, which is Item 1M. We removed Eric Payne and added Robert Fuentes and America Hernandez. Also changed to Item 1F, a revision was made, the item has been removed from the agenda by staff. Item 1G should read, "Actions pertaining to authorizing, not accept, the submission of grant applications through statewide park development and community revitalization program." Item 1H is being removed from the agenda by staff. Item 1Q, which is the poem for the city of Fresno, either Councilmembers Arias, Soraya, or Asparza should announce this item is being moved to either General Admin or Council due to the presentation that's involved. Shouldn't be on consent. And 5A, which is a close session item regarding Garney Pacific Company, has been removed from the agenda by staff. And finally, Item ID 1963, which is the item for the FRC Board. Just need to announce that that item is being considered by both the Board and the Council. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Do any Councilmembers have any changes to the agenda?
Councilmember, Council President, I do have one change.
Okay.
Council President, Agenda Item 1L will be withdrawn by the sponsors. We would like to thank the Mayor for meeting with us yesterday and finding a solution that addresses our goal to collectively serve the needs of our growing constituencies. The agreement results in dedicated parking for Council staff, additional Council office space for support staff and interns, with necessary transition time for implementation. Again, Mayor, thank you for your willingness to collaborate with us on this matter, and understand that in turn the Mayor would like to thank us, the Council, for working with him to develop a solution. So, the item is formally withdrawn from the agenda.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Council President, I'd like to move Item 1Q over to General Admin.
You may have to remind me to bring that up during our General Admin section of the meeting, thank you. Okay. With that, is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on any agenda item? Seeing none, do you have a motion? Motion by Member Brettafield, second by Member Soraya, is there any opposition? Seeing none, passes 6-0. Are there any changes to the minutes of May 1st and May 2nd?
No changes.
Is there a motion by Member Soraya, second by Member Asparza? Any opposition? Passes 6-0, we're moving right along here, folks, great. Next is the ceremonial presentations. First is a proclamation of Alan Hoffman Day, and this is sponsored by Mayor Brand. Good afternoon, Mayor Brand.
Good morning. Good afternoon. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Come on up, Alan. We're here today to recognize the accomplishments of Alan Hoffman, who's been with the Fresno Metropolitan Flood Control District since 1976, got that right? Oh, '79, a few years off. Promoted as the Operations Manager in 1998, and he's been the General Manager since 2014. And he's been involved in Red Bank, Francher Creek Flood Control Project, River Park Little League, Oso de Oro Park, I'm sure many others. And flood control is a big part of our city. It does obviously the drainage for our city, it provides when appropriate for recharge on our system, and recreational opportunities, so it's been a major part of how we've grown as a city. And before I go any further, would the Clerk please read the proclamation?
Whereas Alan Hoffman began working for the Fresno Metropolitan Flood Control District as an engineering student intern in 1976, and was hired by the FMFCD as an engineer on May 28, 1979. And whereas Alan Hoffman's hard work paid off when he was promoted to manage the Operations Department in 1998, and the Design Department in 2001. And whereas Alan Hoffman has honorably served the FMFCD General Manager, Secretary since 2014. And whereas during his 40-year tenure with FMFCD, Mr. Hoffman's project accomplishments have included project coordination for the construction and operation of the Red Bank Francher Creek Flood Control Project, urban drainage and flood control system operations and coordination with other local agencies, technical design and construction of the Oso de Oro Basin Park and River Park Little League, as well as continued expansion of the groundwater recharge program. Now therefore be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand and the City Council of the City of Fresno do hereby commend Alan Hoffman for his 40 years of service to the Fresno Metropolitan Flood Control District and the people it serves, and do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 16, 2019, to be Alan Hoffman Day in the City of Fresno.
Give a big hand.
Well, first, Mayor, I want to thank you for this honor and the Council. And, you know, when I think back of forward reflection on 40 years, this agency wasn't even in existence when I was born. I was actually six days old when the voters of this community voted this agency into being, and so when I think of the agency only being 63 years old, and I've participated in it now for 40 years, I've been 65% of the life of the agency, and so it's, I've seen a lot of changes and a lot of growth, both in this community and how we serve it. I think I grew up as a rice farmer's son, so I knew the importance of water, and so to get into that, a type of a work environment in water, I think was kind of meant to be. And so anyway, I hope that our agency, I know as a partner with the City of Fresno, is trying to do its best to serve this community by capturing as much water as we can, and doing what's right in the saving of that precious resource. So, thank you so much, Mayor Brand.
Thank you, Alan, give him one more round of applause.
Congratulations, Alan, job well done. Next, we'll go to a proclamation that I'm going to present regarding Lyme Disease Awareness Month in the City of Fresno, and then I'll stay down there and be joined by the Manager's Office and the Mayor's Office on the Public Works Proclamation, so give me a minute. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Are we awake? Hello? Good afternoon, everyone? Much better, great. Hey, listen, this is actually, I've set off to the best part of the meeting, is having these moments, these ceremonial moments, to present proclamations to very deserving people or very deserving causes. This afternoon, I want to bring awareness to a very important matter, and so Jody, would you come up, please, and join me? So, it's hard to believe that a small thing can take a life and cause a lot of pain. What is that small thing? That small thing is a tiny tick. It changed your life, Jody Hudson, forever. And why? Because a tick bit her daughter. Alex had infected her, and this little tick bite took away the health, the activity of the sweethearted girl that did everything, athletics, academics, the whole thing, and changed her life and your life. And she passed away March of 2018, and as a result of that, Jody, in her grief, created a nonprofit. And the nonprofit is called the Alex Hudson Lyme Foundation, and this is fulfilling a promise that she made to her daughter as she was dying. So, it's very important and very significant. So, we're going to start with a quick video, so Brianna, could you start the video, please?
My name is Jody Hudson, and Alex Hudson is my daughter. On March 24th of this year, at 22 years old, she passed away of Lyme disease. In her honor and to keep her legacy alive, I have established the Alex Hudson Lyme Disease Foundation. It was her wish for us to continue on, to help others that need proper testing, to know if they truly have Lyme disease, and not be a medical mystery, as Alex was diagnosed years ago. She had arthroscopic knee surgery in 7th grade, and they thought, well, maybe she just has, you know, knee issues or something, and they could not determine what was wrong with her, why she was developing all this inflammation and joint pain. Lots of things were talked about, they thought, well, maybe it's something she was going to outgrow, it was growing pains. In May of last year, we took her to a doctor down in LA, a specialist, who actually did proper testing, and that's when it was determined that she had a tick-borne illness, which we found out was Lyme. When you have Lyme, you, it's debilitating. It affects every part of your body, your organs. Supplements, medicines that are supposed to help heal your body actually turned on her. She was 120 pounds when she was diagnosed with Lyme. When she died, she was at 59 pounds. She really wanted to be that miracle, she wanted to be the person that was going to turn this disease around, and she was going to be that walking testimony. It didn't happen that way, so she told me that she wanted me to carry on and be that hope for other individuals, and to really make sure that people were properly diagnosed, tested, to create awareness, to make people believe that they actually had this disease. I mean, God definitely had a greater purpose for her, and she knew that. And when she passed away, she had the biggest smile on her face, and I knew that she was okay.
Wow, what a moving video that is, and thank you for showing your strength and concerns, and awareness is the key. And through your foundation, you're creating that awareness that everyone needs to know about, so could you tell us a little bit more about the foundation?
Sure, it's my pleasure, and first of all, thank you so much, and thank you, Council, for recognizing May as Lyme Awareness Month. I know that Alex is with us, and she is smiling down upon this, and she's thinking, dear godmother, don't embarrass yourself here. But anyway, our foundation is all about creating awareness, education, raising funds for research. Last October, we hosted our first fundraiser, Tea for Alex, and we were able to raise $50,000 to support research named after Alex. So, we are going strong, and we live in such a great city where everyone just really comes together and supports each other, so again, I thank you, and I thank the Council for honoring us this month.
Thank you very much for being here, appreciate it so much. Could you read the proclamation? And when this is being read, the first couple of paragraphs, listen to the numbers, it's amazing, about Lyme disease.
Whereas tick-borne disease is on the rise, affecting more than 350,000 Americans each year. Broken down, that's 29,000 new cases a month, 959 new cases a day, and 40 new cases an hour. And whereas 200 children each day are diagnosed with Lyme disease, equating to four school buses of children per day. And whereas Lyme disease is the fastening-spreading tick-borne disease in the United States, creating an urgent need for resources, education, outreach, and prevention, all necessary components in slowing the growth of the Lyme. And whereas Fresno's nonprofit Alex Hudson Lyme Foundation was created by Jody Hudson as a way to honor her daughter's legacy and raise awareness of the Central, for the Central Valley, the state, and indeed the United States through dedicated research, so that others may not lose their loved ones, like Alex, at a very young age, to this tick-borne disease. And whereas in 2018, in its first year of inception, the Alex Hudson Lyme Foundation is becoming self-sustaining, and has partnered with National Lyme and Tick-Borne Associations to further research, established Alex as a Bluebird Scholarship that assists Central Californian Lyme patients with medical expenses, and it was awarded the Alex Hudson 50K Research Program in partnership with the Global Lyme Alliance. And whereas in collaboration with May's Lyme Disease Awareness Month, the Alex Hudson Lyme Foundation urges everyone to become aware of the debilitating illness that ticks can bring through just one bite, and to practice prevention, become educated and aware, and to be attentive to the signs and symptoms of this deadly disease. Now therefore be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2019, to be National Lyme Disease Awareness Month in the City of Fresno.
We were just talking, and it's, four school bus loads of children every day are diagnosed with Lyme's disease, it's an incredible thing that we don't know a lot about, but thank you again for bringing the awareness and for helping us understand. Thank you so much, Jody. Bye-bye. Okay, next, we're going to co-sponsor, and this is a proclamation of National Public Works Week, and this is by the Mayor Manager's Office, Mayor's Office, and my office. So, Jerry, come on down again, my friend. And Scott, I guess you're our go-to guy. And of course, I forgot the proclamation, shoot. Scott, I'll let you talk this, I'll go grab it.
Thank you, Council President, and I stand here, joined by my fellow directors, Assistant City Manager Jim Shad, and assistant directors. This is Nationwide, National Public Works Week, is a time just to recognize the hard-working men and women who really serve the community, kind of in ways that are often not recognized, just being appreciative that streets, streets are safe, potholes get filled, traffic lights are timed, you know, water flows, trash gets picked up, and then all the vehicles and equipment that make that happen, and it's really not just about Public Works Department, it's really the national mission of Public Works, which includes things like water, wastewater, sewer, fleet services, to make things happen. And we're just, this group here is just really representatives in the City of Fresno of over 1,000 city employees, over 1,000 hard-working men and women who serve the community every day.
Scott pretty much covered things, I just wanted to say, this is near and dear to my heart, we did this in past years, and then it waned for a while, so I'm very glad that these gentlemen brought it forth again. I think it really does show the extent of the work that these folks do for the community. If you haven't noticed, we have some displays outside showing just a very small portion of what these folks do. I would invite everybody to go out and look at that and interact with our staff to get a good idea of what the magnitude of the work they do, most of it unseen or unrecognized. So, once again, very proud of these folks for the work they do every single day.
I totally agree with everything you've said, and I was going to suggest that whoever's in here now, when you have a moment, go outside and check out what they do. And the traffic signal, it's like 1,000 lights flashing, and I don't know anything about what they represent, other than, don't touch it, because I tend to break things, and whatever, but it's a beautiful display, it covers various areas of public work, so please, take a moment and interact with the people out there and take a look at this equipment, it's pretty phenomenal. So with that, could we read the proclamation?
Whereas National Public Works Week, NPWW, was instituted as a public education campaign by the American Public Works Association, APWA, in 1960, calling attention to the importance of various services provided by Public Works in our community, which are an integral part of our citizen everyday lives. And whereas Public Works infrastructure, facilities, and services play a pivotal role in the health, safety, and quality of life for the citizens of Fresno. And whereas Public Works infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the skilled dedication of Public Works professionals, including engineers and administrators, field staff and office staff representing the city of Fresno. And whereas Public Works professionals design, build, operate, maintain, and protect the transportation systems and equipment, water supply infrastructures, sewage and refuse disposal systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities that are vital to the citizens of the city of Fresno. Now therefore be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand and the City Council members of the city of Fresno do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through the 25th to be National Public Works Week in the city of Fresno, calling upon citizens and civic organizations to recognize the contributions which the Department of Public Works, Transportation, and Public Utilities provide every day for our comfort and our quality of life.
Okay, next, our next ceremonial is a proclamation of Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month, sponsored by Member Soraya, and she'll follow up with another proclamation, Fresno Rainbow Pride Parade, again sponsored by Member Soraya.
Good afternoon, everyone, it is my pleasure to invite former Senator and today Vice President of External Affairs, Planned Parenthood Marmonde, Liz Figueroa, is she here today? Yes. And then her entire team, I know we have Socorro Santillana in the room, Patsy Montgomery, Mario Alfaro, Heather Myers, those are some of the local folks that we get to work with on a regular basis here, and I want to invite all the women that are here, that are standing in support of making sure that we do teen pregnancy prevention throughout our community. So, if you guys want to join us. So, as we know, May is the month where every year, communities throughout our entire nation are proclaiming National Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month. We see elected officials, organizations across our country coming together and educate our communities about reproductive health, because that's what really is going to help us address the issue of teen pregnancy that is so pervasive, not only in the city of Fresno, but in the entire Central Valley region. So, today, we invited an organization that continues to work tirelessly to provide not only reproductive health services to families here in our community and to women, but really are out educating our young people, women and men equally, about reproductive health. So, we want to thank them for being here and for all their efforts that they do every single day to make sure that we're addressing what I would call an epidemic here in our city of Fresno and the county. I was looking at some of the stats, and we're the epicenter of, you know, within the state when it comes to having among the highest teen pregnancy rates. In Fresno County alone, the birth rates hover around 32% when we're talking about teens. So, it's a staggering percentage, we should be nowhere near in the 30%. So, we know that we have a lot of work to do here, in, not only in our city, but our entire valley, there are county, neighboring counties, their rates are a little bit higher, but we won't celebrate that our rate is a little bit lower, we will continue to work harder each day to make sure that we're educating, that we're acknowledging the work that is being done by the various organizations. I've had the pleasure of working not only with Planned Parenthood, but also Fresno Barrios Unidos, who has also been an extreme, a critical partner in these efforts as well, and so I want to thank all of you for being here today to make sure that we proclaim the month of May as Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month. And so I'll pass it on to Socorro, if you want to say a few words about maybe some of the things that you guys are working on.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Councilmember Soraya and the rest of the Councilmembers for supporting this effort. You know, as Councilmembers, it is your duty to look out for the well-being of your entire city, and when we're looking at the future of our young people, it is so important for them to have medically accurate information and access to quality health services, and it's definitely, you're doing a great job by assuring that, by making sure that the city understands this, this is an issue that is important to the City Council, and that you are supportive, and by doing that, you will make sure that, you know, students have what they need in order to thrive, because one day, they are going to be our City Council members, they will be our Chiefs of Police, they will be our nurses in our clinics, and so therefore, we need to invest in them, we need to protect their rights, and make sure that they have the information that they need to make healthy decisions for themselves, because by doing that, we are letting them know that we trust them with our futures, right? And so, this is for them, and yes, I agree, there are tons of organizations and partners within the community that contribute to this work as well, and I could tell you, it cannot be done by one organization, it takes multiple, and also, it doesn't take only one avenue, right? There needs to be, you know, education, access to clinic. For those who are already teen parents, there needs to be support groups and education that aligns with their daily lives and was doable for them, and mentors, and just for us to remember that, you know, they are important, and so that we need to, adult allies assure that they have what they need, you know, every day in their lives, but thank you for that, and I don't need to go into the stats or the importance of this, because you have done a remarkable job on that, I know that you're on top of that, but just for all of you out there, think about our young people and what they really need, you know, I don't want to age myself, but it's a different world out there. It's a different world for them, and they need more support and more accurate information than ever, because of our social media, they have information, but it's not the always best information, so it's us, up to us as adults to assure that they have what they need. Thank you.
Just on behalf of Planned Parenthood Marmonde, we wanted to thank you, Councilwoman and the Council, for this recognition, and we really appreciate that you value the work that our educators and our public affairs teams, the work that they do in Fresno and in the surrounding communities, we really appreciate.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas teen pregnancy crosses all Whereas teen pregnancy crosses all racial, cultural, socioeconomic lines, and teen parenthood has emotional health and financial consequences that impacts teens, their families, and society as a whole. And whereas providing young people the education and resources to prevent unintended pregnancies remain urgent, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention found that the teen birth rate in the United States has declined, but remains the highest of the industrialized world, and California teen birth rates have declined, though rates in San Joaquin Valley have remained the highest in the state. And whereas for every dollar spent preventing unintended pregnancy, California saves an additional $7.09 in future medical and social services costs. And whereas Planned Parenthood, from Marmonde's education departments, diverse partnerships, and nonprofit government and community members have played a significant role in reducing teen birth rates in the area by focusing on prevention through comprehensive sex education and access to quality, affordable healthcare. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and city council do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 to be Teen Pregnancy Prevention and Awareness Month in the city of Fresno.
Again, thank you. Round of applause for all the work that you guys do. And the work that you guys continue to do across our country to make sure that women's rights are protected. So I want to personally thank you for that. Next, we have the Fresno Rainbow Pride Parade proclamation. So I'll invite Jeff Robinson. Did you bring anyone else? Oh, yeah. Sawyer, come on down. So I get excited to be able to do this every year, because I share part of the Tower District, where the Pride Parade has been going on now, this year, for 29 years. And I think this is something to celebrate in our community. I know also Planned Parenthood, you guys are out there every year supporting this event. So I want to first thank the folks that are here, in particular Jeff and then Sawyer, for always contacting us and staying connected, making sure that we are part of this and that the city of Fresno supports this. So the month of June, which is next month, and because we don't have a council meeting early in the month before the parade, that's why we're doing it today, but this June marks the 29th anniversary of the Fresno Rainbow Pride, the Central Valley's LGBT Parade and Festival. This year's theme is "Together." Very, very important theme for all of us, because the only way that our city is going to thrive and we're going to succeed is by working together. So I love that you guys have this theme. This year's parade will take place on Saturday, June 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. in the Tower District, and it is free to attend and very family friendly. So we ask folks that if you guys are interested to go, to get there early, because the best spots are usually taken up early in that day. So for those of you that don't know, the Fresno Rainbow Pride is the largest one-day gathering of the LGBT community in the Central Valley. It is an outdoor celebration where you not only have a parade of a variety of floats from different groups and leaders in our community celebrating, again, with a festival, live music, entertainment, great food, information and merchandise booths, children's activities, dancing, and a whole lot of fun. So I want to encourage all of you guys to come out, come out to the Tower District, come out and celebrate, because I think that it's important that we celebrate the diversity that exists in our city of Fresno, and that we continue to support our LGBT community. So I want to thank you guys for the hard work that you guys have put to make sure that this parade is a success and that the whole community is out there supporting you. Thank you. So a few words?
Sure. Hello, everyone. I really would encourage everyone to come out. It is a very important day for the LGBT community. As the councilwoman was saying, it is the largest event. We'll have over 5,000 people that come out to support, and it's not the LGBT community that comes out, it's all of our allies and friends, our neighbors. The Tower District residents come and support. There'll be over 5,000 people. It is a huge event. We make it very, very friendly for everyone. We're one of the few festivals in California that is a pride festival that includes stuff for children and seniors and teens and everyone in between. It is a family-friendly event. We will have Children's Garden that's ran by our Savior Lutheran Church. Speaking of the religious community, there'll probably be eight or nine churches, including Temple Beth Israel will be with us. So come out and join us. It does take us all together to make Fresno great. Every month, we have changed our title. It's "Together," and then "Together We Vote," "Together We Love," "Together We Give Honor" during Veterans Memorial Day, "Together We Celebrate" during Christmas and Hanukkah, "Together We Love" during June. We've changed it each month, because we had so many ideals about "Together." I want to thank the city council, I want to thank you specifically for always being there to support us, and I encourage everyone to come out. Thank you.
Do you want to come on the set? Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas the 29th Annual Fresno Pride Parade will be held on Saturday, June 1st, 2019. Pride originated as a result of the riots at Stonewall Inn in 1969. The gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender community desired better representation and a day to celebrate and recognize their own culture. Today, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Americans form an important part of our national tapestry and have contributed to every facet of our society. And whereas the 2019 Fresno Pride Parade invites people from all over the Central Valley to participate in the activities provided, to educate, celebrate each other, and to commemorate the rich diversity of our LGBTQIA+ community. This year's theme is "Together We Pride," to represent how through unity our community has accomplished milestones. And whereas it is our duty to advocate for all of those who experience a hardship as a result of discrimination and inequality, it is only through a community's unity that we can overcome injustices towards all groups of people. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and the city council does hereby proclaim June 1st, 2019, day to be Fresno Pride Parade and Festival Day in the city of Fresno.
Next, we're going to go to a resolution sponsored by Member Sparza, declaring the origin of a certain place names as the official poem of Fresno.
Yes, thank you, Council President Caprileo. Appreciate you allowing us to hear this item early on in the meeting. As you all know, just last week, or not last week, but the last council meeting, we found out who our new poet laureate was. I believe Marisol Vaca is Fresno's fourth, someone correct me if I'm wrong, fourth poet laureate. And during the proclamation, swearing in, she revealed to us that she had written a poem for Fresno. I was moved upon hearing the poem myself. I think my colleagues liked it as well. And I had the crazy idea to make this poem the official poem of the city of Fresno, since our poet laureate took it upon herself to write this beautiful poem. So the poem, I have brought a physical copy of it today, and Marisol, I'm going to come on down there, if you'll join me. I'd love if you would read the poem before we took a vote.
Is there a motion? I'll second it.
There is a motion.
All right. Motion by Member Sparza, seconded by Council President.
All right, Marisol, if you wouldn't mind, for all the folks who are here and all the folks who are watching, and all the folks who will watch this in the future, you know, just for the record, letting us know what our official poem of the city of Fresno will be. And thank you for writing it.
Thank you so much, councilmember. I am totally honored to have this as, I think, the first official poem of Fresno. And so I'll read it again, I know, yes. And at a really wonderful time, I think it speaks very, very well of a council meeting that has poetry read in the actual building, and not only once, but twice. So extra special, and thank you so much. It's a great honor. So I'm going to read, and I've never read off of a framed piece of art. This is beautiful, by the way, thank you. "The Origin of Certain Place Names, A Poem for Fresno Named for the Abundant Ash Trees Lining the San Joaquin River." I say Fresno, and the city blows out of my mouth as an exhale. I say Fresno and ask for her help in writing this poem. And she answers me. When I speak, when I give her time to speak, her voice is chain link fence bouncing, cry of engine and helicopter, wind in a field of wheat. Three ash trees growing in a half circle on the edge of the bank of the San Joaquin River, like three sisters born in the valley. First sister, foothill ash. Caroline paints the blackbirds that point to the sky. Caroline paints landscapes stolen from her dreams in the night. She says, "The highway that takes me out of the desert has become like a wide-winged bird, and I'm scared of being anything but what I am." And the fields forever drinking water that sprays from sprinkler pumps. This valley, what does it really look like? The hands of my mother as she combs through my black hair. Second sister, California ash. Gao turns the light on to finish her reading. Gao's hands draw a song sparrow in between the lines she is reading. She thinks, "I've spent my life searching for a way to say your name." The intensity of fog in the winter, the grapevines in the early dark, distances shrouded in shapes so familiar they look like foothills smoking. The long-legged man running past on my side, I look for him as I drive. I will eat the grape skins and all. And third sister, two-petal ash. Ome taps her foot as she presses record. Ome's feet are clay-colored sparrows. Their wings beat to the sound in their hearts. She says, "I am going to dance. I have fallen in love in an almond orchard, and I'm going to dance." Fresno is three voices and many. It is the kind of city that walks with you, takes a short ride to the store with you, stays later at your place than expected, dances with its slow poem arms at your house party, eats tacos al pastor in a booth with you, gets lost in a suburban neighborhood near Sunnyside with you. It may call you in the evening to tell you to walk outside and look at the moon, a moon that somehow seems like a Fresno moon, low-hanging, orange in the trees, like a barn owl's heart-shaped face looking down from above. Thank you.
Thank you, Marisol. I'm very excited to see what your two-year tenure will bring, beginning with this poem.
Congratulations again, and we should read poetry in the chambers more often.
Yes, anytime you'd like. You invite me or any of us over, and we'll be there.
We can do that. If you'd like to come over, we'll do a photo.
Councilmembers, while you're there, we'll be taking a roll call or a call for the vote. It's been motioned by Councilmember Sparza, seconded by Council President Caprileo. Do we have any objections? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Congratulations, Marisol, on behalf of, you know, my office. I think that it's awesome to see, you know, a woman, a woman of color, be the poet laureate for our community. It makes me very proud. Thank you for the service that you're going to give over the next two years, and look forward to partnering in whatever ways we can to make sure that we get more poetry out into our community. Thank you.
Thank you. It means a lot to me.
Thank you again, and congratulations. Next, we have councilmember comments. No one has punched up, that's good. Except me. So we're going to start off with "Hello Summer." It's the event that kicks off this Saturday, the 18th, at Vinland Elementary School in District 4. Please join us, rain or shine. Looks like it's going to be rain, but you can't stop fun even with the rain. So we're going to have lots of activities for the families, for kids. Everyone is welcome that is ready to have some summer fun. So I want to thank Sarah, TJ, and the entire Parks team for all their hard work on doing this. Macy's at Fresno's Fashion Fair Mall will become the chain's first low-cost store within a store concept. A low-cost store within a store concept. It'll be called Macy's Backstage. The grand opening is this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. It's May 18th again, so you can go to Macy's and then come out to Vinland Park and have some fun and celebrate and show off your new clothes or items that you purchased at Macy's. Yesterday, I had the honor of attending the first-ever Vietnam Veterans Honor Flight Home. It was a very emotional experience for me. My brother was a corporal in the United States Marine Corps, and he served in Vietnam 1966, 1967. So it was very, very important for me to be there. And to say the magic words, which are "Welcome Home." My brother and others that fought in that war were never really welcomed home. And we thank people for their service, but this was a group of men and women that fought for our country, and finally, we're giving them the welcome home they deserve. So it was a great moment. We had like 350 people. I want to thank Kevin and his crew right down here to my left. They did a great job putting that all together, and it was such a great afternoon, evening. I loved it. I loved it. Thank you very much. Next is the Fresno State, you know, Fresno State's in my district, and I'm a graduate, so I always try to make everyone aware of their successes. So the latest success is Fresno State's Women's Rugby. Women's rugby, I don't know how many of you know that there is a Women's Rugby League, and they are the national champions at the club level of rugby. So our hats off and congratulations to the Fresno State Women's Rugby Team. Grizzly Fest was May 4th. I had the honor, privilege of attending that event, and what an event. There were thousands of people there. Art displays, food, photo opportunities, a marketplace, and that's in addition to some fantastic entertainment, entertainment that everyone enjoyed, all sorts of variations of entertainment. Of course, I like Ziggy Marley the best, but that's just me. Portugal the Band was there, and it was just a fantastic event. So it'll be here next year, encourage all of you to be there. It's a two-day event, started at noon, ended at 10:00, right, Gary? 10:00 in the evening, so that was a positive thing for everyone. And the last item I wanted to mention was, Councilmember Chavez and I were part of the One Voice Team, and that's cities from the county, the county and the city of Fresno, all coming together and doing a full-on attack, if you will, to Washington, D.C. to get as much money as we can to improve our community. And that would be streets, intersections, the airport, on and on, as Member Chavez will enlighten us as well. But it was a great trip. We did, I think, 15 meetings in three days, so it was really, really fast, and it was like a marathon. But I appreciated it. I think D.C. appreciated us. We had a lot of people listening and committing their word and their money to the city of Fresno, so it was fantastic. Next is, thank you all for listening. Ms. Morello, you are up, then Miguel. You are up, then Miguel and Nelson.
Thank you, Council President. So a couple announcements. This Friday, May 17th, which is tomorrow, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Quigley Park, we are gonna have our annual Quigley Lual. There will be carnival games, laser tag, arts and crafts, bike rodeo, lual dance performances, and a lot more. We will also, for those of you that are tracking the Quigley renovation community outreach process, we're gonna be out there showcasing the ideas and the various options of the renovation of the park. We want your community input, so we hope that folks will be out there to give us the input for this master plan. Next is the Wilson Island Centennial Celebration. This is very exciting, so we invite folks to come celebrate the National Historic Preservation Month with the Wilson Island Historic District Centennial Celebration, and they're gonna be having a walking tour. This is a free event to the community. It's on Saturday, May 18th, at the Roy's Auditorium in the Fresno High School, which is on Echo. It'll start at 9:30 a.m. and end at 11:00 a.m. The city of Fresno has issued some very special proclamations. If you guys don't know where Wilson Island is, it's a six-block neighborhood and part of the Wilsons' North Fresno, North Fresno tract subdivided by the landowner, Rosanna Wilson, in 1908. It is the neighborhood one block north of where I live, so it's very exciting to see all these very unique and beautiful homes still exist in our city. And so just invite you guys to come out and check out the very awesome architecture. Next, I also want to announce that at Inspiration Park this Saturday as well, we're hosting our third annual Inspiration for Humanity event by Habitat for Humanity. Invite folks at 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. to come out, enjoy free food, games, music, and resource booths. And then lastly, we're very busy this week. Echo and Weldon Block Party is gonna take place right by Fresno High, Monday, May 27th, which is Memorial Day holiday, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is a celebration with the Fresno High neighborhood and local businesses. There will be live food, live music, food, coffee, and arts and crafts, and ice cream. So invite folks to come out and enjoy the Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. For me, just one quick inquiry for legal counsel and the city manager, I don't know who would be appropriate, but I've gotten some inquiries from the candidates who are running for city council, and they're interested in meeting with city staff. I don't know what the procedures are or the protocol, but if you guys can let us all know so we could notify them, we wanna make sure that candidates have the most accurate information as we're going down the path of, you know, pursuing the city council responsibilities and, of course, that we're accessible to everyone as it is determined, whatever the procedures are.
Would you like a written response on that, or?
Yeah, a written response to the whole council so that we're all on the same page as people ask us for, you know, because they're coming to us right now, asking us to facilitate meetings with department heads, and I think that should be the city manager or city attorney, whatever the procedure you guys wanna follow. But if we can just all be on the same page on how we accommodate those kinds of requests.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll get together with the city attorney, and we'll put together a memo for you all.
And I will tell you, typically, of course, the departments and so forth will be up to the manager. When legal questions come to me, I will typically answer those legal questions. If it's something of general interest, we'll do a memo and put it on our city attorney website also.
It's been a very busy time in District 7. I won't take too much time, but I do wanna highlight a few different gems. The newest addition to District 7 is a beautiful mural on the northeast corner of Teleri and Cedar. This mural was conducted in partnership with the Arnie Nixon Center over at Fresno State. If you drive by or even stop by and check out the art, the art is inspired by the pictures in a book called Maybe Something Beautiful, and drawn by an artist named Rafael Lopez, who actually joined us here in Fresno on Saturday as we got together ourselves and the community, the Arnie Nixon Center, to celebrate and actually paint the mural together. So that, is very proud of that piece of art in District 7, and really proud that it was a grassroots effort from the bottom up. So I encourage you and everybody to stop by or drive by and check it out. I know myself and probably the Councilmember Chavez catch it on the way home, but the other council members, next time you drive by, stop by and take a look, northeast corner. Directly after, you know, attending that event and the mural, I went up to the Fresno Art Museum, which is not new to our district, but a gem here in our Fresno community in general. I had a chance to check out some of the exhibits. I actually went up there to take my mom to brunch. They had a Mother's Day brunch. And, you know, I encourage everybody to, you know, take a, stop by the Fresno Art Museum. I don't do so enough. You know, the days get busy, but I really enjoyed my time there. And lastly, just this week, I did a ribbon cutting with a business in my district. They're called Innovation Commercial Flooring. I wanna thank them and the Chamber of Commerce for the invitation. They've been here in Fresno nine years, and so really great people and really great to celebrate with them as they cut the ribbon and invited folks in. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Chavez.
Thank you, President Caprillo. Just a quick update. Last week, we had the senior springfling at Moskella Community Center. Hundreds of senior citizens came out. I wanna thank our Parks Department for helping out in that event. It was the fifth annual senior springfling celebration that we had there. I think Supervisor Quintero, he was able to bring some resources from the county as well. And also, a special thank you to our police officers, our firefighters that went out and barbecued and served our seniors that day. And then just a really quick update on what President Caprillo was mentioning. We had over 30 meetings on Capitol Hill from the White House to the House of Representatives, to the Senate, over, I wanna say over 20-something one-to-ones with staffers. We met with FEMA, Department of Transportation. There's a lot of conversation going on over the $1 to $2 trillion infrastructure bill that's working its way. I think it's very important that we stay on it and secure additional funding, especially for the city of Fresno. We know that that's gonna be critical for the investments that are coming down the road. And with that, I'll yield back to President Caprillo.
Thank you. It was a pleasure to work with you in D.C. You're a natural-born leader, my friend. Shake and bake, yeah. So we'll go to the consent calendar now. Any member at the council here wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Member Brettafield?
Yes, I'd like to pull 1J and 1K and 1R.
Thank you. A member, Soria.
The item that I wanted to pull has been pulled. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the balance of the consent calendar? Motion by Member Soria. I'll second it. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, it's passed a 6-0.
Counsel, did we go to the public?
Sorry?
Did we go to the public?
I'm sorry, I got a head call. I can't hear half the.
Did we get public comment?
Thank you. Anyone in the public wish to comment on a specific item on the consent calendar? Please come forward. Give us your name and address. You'll have three minutes. Seeing none, back here. And with that, we will go to the contested consent calendar. That'd be first, 1J. Member Brettafield.
Yeah, Kevin, I just wanna address Uber and Lyft. We can do them together. The issue I had was, well, first of all, Uber's coming back, or they've never been here, right?
They were here for.
Brief time.
They were here briefly, yes.
Okay, but they're coming back?
Coming back.
And I'm just curious about the fees, because I was looking at the, they're different for Uber versus Lyft. We generate, the city's generating more with Lyft than Uber. What's the difference? What is the fee? I was looking through the staff report. I didn't see where the fees were.
This is estimated revenue based on historic activity by both Uber, what they were here before, what we kinda thought they were doing, and then what currently Lyft is doing at the airport now. So we kinda projected those numbers out to give a sense. Now, obviously, market share's gonna balance out as they both are now gonna be here, and so, but at the end of the day, when you combine the two, we think that's about what the revenue for the department is going to be.
Okay, so what are the fees specifically with Uber versus Lyft?
So the fee is part of the city's master fee schedule, which becomes effective on July 1st. It's $3 a pickup and $3 a drop-off to the corporation. And the beauty of this is, we're gonna have competition now between these rideshare entities, so that they can balance out between each other. Currently, Lyft is at about 300 airports nationwide, Uber about 100 airports nationwide, and they kind of vacillate back and forth in terms of market share. But anytime we can provide this kind of a choice and competition, that's a win for the traveling public.
Absolutely. So is it $3 that is being generated by the, to the city? Is that what you're saying?
To the airport department, for their revenue to help us operate and run the airport. So, yeah, so every drop-off and then every pickup would be a $3, and there's a tracking system in place for that. There's a major, a corporation that we and other airports use nationwide that tracks all this. Everything is fed into it automatically in terms of the trips and fees, because it's all electronic, and then that information is fed back to us.
Okay, so the fees are the same, but you're thinking that somehow Lyft is gonna generate more revenue because of the frequency of use?
That's correct. So, you know, back when they started in 2016, right out of the gate, there were kinda 2,000 trips a month, approximately. Here recently, we're upwards between 5,500 and 6,000 trips a month with just Lyft alone. We anticipate that growth to continue. It's continuing on an average of about 1,000 trips per month every year, just growth. So how that balances out between the two companies, we'll wait and see, but we'll be north of 6,000 trips a month, I'm sure, as soon as we get Uber onboard.
Will these revenues also be used for the expansion of the airport?
Yes, they actually help with the everyday maintenance of the roadway systems and all the infrastructure we have in place at the airport. In addition to, you know, the parking fees that we already have in place, helps will pay for the expansion as well. So, but it all goes together, and part of that is our O and M, and it's our capital program, supporting debt service, for example, for the parking garage in the future. All of it is together for that.
Well, I welcome Uber. I think the competition's great. I think they're both great companies, and I think our constituents benefit from it. Council President Caprillo, it's in your district, so would you like to?
Thank you. Member Arias had a couple of comments, and I'll make a motion after that.
Thank you. Can you walk me through why the fee remains at the airport department? I know they're using the frontage street to pick people off and drop off, but if it's you or legal counsel, who determines whether that money has to remain at the airport department versus the general fund?
That's an FAA regulation. All revenue generated, and this is not the Fresno Airport, but all federally obligated airports in the United States, the revenue that's generated by the airport for whatever the activity is, whether it's, you know, land leases for property around the airport that the airport owns, ground transportation fees, airlines, the whole bit, all revenue stays with the airport and used for the benefit of airport operations and their capital program. And it's in the federal, it's the revenue use policy with the FAA.
So the gas station that's on airport property right outside, all the revenue for that lease goes to the airport department?
Right, so that's a land lease, and so we have a long-term lease with the operator that pays, and that goes to supporting the airport. I mean, there's a number of properties around the airport that's, like, outside the fence. For example, the Piccadilly Inn properties, we own that property. We don't own the buildings, because it was, the land was under contract when it was empty, and they built it. You know, business parks and things like this.
So is the airport responsible for making sure that the properties leased by the airport are maintained and managed according to city codes?
Yes, we own the property, and in our lease agreements, we have language that says that the operator must be in compliance with all the local, well, all local state and federal regulations. And so we have a property management division at the airport, and part of their function is to look at these leaseholds, let's say they're off-airport, and ensure that they are in compliance. And, you know, it's a big job. We have hundreds and hundreds of contracts. You know, we're not perfect, obviously, but sometimes we'll hear something from somebody, and then we'll jump on it right away, and other times, we're more proactive when we have the time.
Well, just FYI, the advertisement of Arc de Haute beer continues to be an issue at that site. You know, there are significant exterior banners that are being used that are not allowed. So if you can just take a look at that gas station.
Are you talking about the one at McKinley and Peach, or is it the one?
Which, I think it's the one on McKinley and Peach, the one that's on airport property?
Okay, yeah.
If you can take a look at both of them, that are airport property.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve. Seconded by Member Soria. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, it passes 6-0. Next is 1K.
He said took them together.
Okay, then we'll go to 1, 0, or 1, 0?
1, I. So can we clarify that the motion was for both, Council President?
It was for both. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the other item that was pulled?
1.
R? Okay, thank you. Then we'll go to 1R.
Okay, I just pulled it just to give a quick update, and do you have the, those... Okay, the memorial that the council unanimously approved is moving forward. We have raised approximately $70,000 to $75,000 thus far, and so that's moving along. And part of this motion is also, we had somebody who specifically does research to make sure all the names that we had were accurate and that we're including everybody in there. There's actually about 500, 550 names of Fresno residents that will be on the memorial, and you can see the design. The design has changed simply because it was felt that having one slab of concrete posed some problems. So this is the design and actually some of the actual names. So I just wanted to point that out to the council, so it's moving along. And again, hopefully, we will unveil this by Veterans Day. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second?
Counsel, just a reminder, this item, you're sitting as the Board of FRC, the nonprofit.
Very good. So anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this item, please come forward. Three minutes. Seeing none, we'll bring it back here. There's a motion by Member Brettafield, seconded by Council President Caprillo. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, it passes 6-0. All right, let's go to a continued hearing, a 2 o'clock item, to vacate a portion of West Devlin Avenue and North Weber Avenue. This is in District 2, Public Works.
Good afternoon, Council President, council members and staff. My name is Jason Cammott. I'm the chief surveyor, city of Fresno Public Works Department. I'm here today to ask council to open the required public hearing for the vacation of a portion of West Devlin Avenue and North Weber Avenue. This hearing was set by resolution of intent 1129-D on April 25th, 2019. It is approximately in the area of the town of Herndon, which is north of Herndon Avenue, and northeast of the Southern Pacific Railroad. This vacation is being requested by Susan Flores, who is the applicant. The purpose of the vacation is to eliminate excess right-of-way for West Devlin Avenue as well as North Weber Avenue. Staff recommends approval of this vacation based on our analysis, and at this time, I'd ask council to open the public hearing for discussion. I'll be available for questions if you need it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none. To the dius, is there a motion? Motion by Member Soria. I'll second it. Is there any opposition? Passes 5-0. Thank you much. Next is 210, scheduled communication appearances to discuss. Next is 210, scheduled communication appearances to discuss the measured cannabis business tax. Is there anyone here to discuss that? Please come forward. Okay, we'll move on from that. We'll go to General Admin. That would be item 3A, approve the award of a cooperative purchase agreement. This is by the Transportation Department. Good afternoon, Mr. Barfield.
Good afternoon, council. Staff asked that you approve the contract to award the purchase of four BACOs, three for Public Works and one for the Department of Public Utilities.
Very good, thank you. Anyone in the public want to comment? Come on down. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Screen, member Sloan, sorry, it's the city attorney Sloan, did you punch up? It's probably on the last item. All right, thanks. So do we have a motion? Motion by member Chavez? Seconded by member Soria? Oh, you, you came back. Welcome home. All right, so, seconded by member Arias, for the record. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, it passes 6-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 3B, actions pertaining to sewer improvements in District 7. This is Public Utilities.
Council President, council members, Deampavich, Public Utilities Department. Item 3B pertains to sewer rehabilitation improvements in the vicinity of North First Street and East Dakota Avenue. Vicinity map is provided in the package, and there are several locations, and there are three actions in this item to adopt categorical exemptions pursuant to Class 1 of CEQA, award construction contract to Emmett's Excavation in the amount of $729,049, and authorize the Director of Public Utilities to sign the contract. I'm available to answer questions.
Motion to approve?
Very good, thank you. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this? Please come forward. This is, correct. Please give us your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Yeah, my name's Jaime Loza. Sewer lines, yeah, I wanted to say something about sewer. I was seeing the stuff outside, I seen this, and I see a bunch of construction sites, okay? Here goes a question is, is, you know, for major jobs, I understand that individuals have to hire certain plumbing companies, but why isn't, you know, why isn't smaller plumbing companies getting hired to do like, but you guys are city, huh? Anyway, smaller, smaller plumbing companies, what is that, $200,000? $700,000 or 200,000? $729,000. You know, I'm pretty sure some of that can go to a smaller corporation, and I'm pretty sure all of it ain't main, major plumbing, you know what I mean? But I don't know if you guys can hire smaller corporations, do smaller jobs for, you know, bigger jobs for bigger corporations. Yeah, I know you guys got those people, but there's smaller corporations with permits and everything else that can kind of get flicked over, what's it called? Crumbs? Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on this item? Please come forward. We will close public comment. Bring it to the diocese, the screen is clear. Do I have a motion? Motion by member Asparza? Seconded by member Soria? Is there any opposition? Passes 6-0. Item 3C, actions pertaining to the TCC grant. With that, we'll immediately move to member Chavez.
Thank you, President. Due to a potential conflict, I'm going to recuse myself from this item.
You are recused.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion by member Arias, seconded by member Soria. Would you like a presentation, colleagues?
No, this is a standard sub-agreement that the master agreement was approved by the council a couple of months ago. So every few council meetings, you'll see some of these sub-agreements come forward to honor the master agreement with the state for the $70 million in TCC funds.
Thank you very much. Member Brettafield?
I just have a quick question, how the 170 homes are selected specifically?
I'm sure staff can elaborate more detail, but my understanding is that 170 homes are identified in the project area of TCC, which is the physical boundaries that TCC was funded for. So West Fresno, downtown, Chinatown in that geography, geography.
Correct, yes. The, the homes have to be in the TCC project area, which is, like Councilman Arias said, Chinatown, downtown, and southwest Fresno. So they will be actively seeking those residents.
Right, so it'll be from that area, but how do they get selected out of that area? In that area, how are those 170 homes selected? It's not just 170 homes.
Right, there's a process that the EOC is going to go through to put the information out there, to get feedback from those residents and see if they're interested in the program and they have a vetting system.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is that it?
The screen is clear. Do we have a motion?
There's been no motion.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any opposition? Passes 5-0 with member Chavez, recused. Next is item 4A, appoint a member to the San Joaquin Valley Special City Selection Committee, and I've been charged with that appointment, and Miguel Arias, you are appointed. Thank you for your, your action on that. Item 4B, actions pertaining to non-transit motels. This is sponsored by Vice President Arias. Sorry. Vice President Arias, Councilmember Asparza, and Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, Council President, for the appointment of additional work. I think Councilmember Chavez stepped out just for that reason. Want you looking to your left. On the item before you, the establishment of inspection program for motels in our city, I wanted to walk you through just a simple presentation to give you context on how we arrived at our joint recommendation by Councilmember Soria, Councilmember Asparza, and myself. And I understand that the mayor is also supportive of our proposal to move forward. So really quickly, there we go. Thank you. So our goal overall in transforming the motels in the city of Fresno is to transform them from their current state to a state where they're safe, quality, and affordable housing for residents in Fresno. As you can tell, it's not working, but currently, the current reality for a lot of our motels, especially those in my district and some on Blackstone, is that they've become an epicenter for human trafficking, an epicenter for drug trade. They're also become permitted housing for the poorest in our community. As a matter of fact, motels in the motel corridor, or motel drive as we refer to it, are, their minimum charge for the day is $50, their maximum is $80. So that ranges that those long-term residents in those motels are paying between $1,500 and $2,400 a month for substandard housing. Additionally, a lot of motels have deteriorated to the point that they are significant health and safety challenges, and they have a lot of conditions that have to be addressed. We also have a significant volume of police calls for service in the areas, as well as the fact that these motels, because they pay a motel tax, generate millions of dollars of the motel tax for the city. In, in general, over the last 40 years, the target audience for motels has dramatically changed for our city. Historically, they would serve a lot of convention center attendees, a lot of tourists making their way to Yosemite. Over time, though, that market has dramatically changed. We've built a lot newer hotels across the city, everything from Herndon and 99 to Jensen 99, 41, 168. We built the Save Mart Center. So there's been far better and newer options for folks who are traveling as tourists through our city to be able to stay at. But we also have dealt with the world of Airbnb. You have more tourists staying in single-family residential places versus the old motel drive. At the same time, we've seen that deterioration occur. We've also seen a significant decrease in the amount of conventions hosted within our city. So the, the market has dramatically changed. These motels have really become the default for a magnet of human trafficking, a permitted housing for, are extremely poor. We have a lot of instances where residents have been living there for five, six, seven years, which those motels were not designed or built for, and yet it continues to occur. So our goal overall as a city is, my hope is that we provide safe, quality, and affordable housing. The goal with this ordinance is to, one, continue the work that the mayor and his staff and city management have started with the motel owners in not just Parkway, Baumont, but also starting to work in Blackstone, getting them to improve the management and the operation of their current facilities, as well as pursuing the option to permanently convert the use of some of these facilities. There, as you know, we have a housing crisis, we have a need for transitional housing, and of course, where it is appropriate and necessary to undergauge a new ownership of these facilities. So to go into a little more detail, the mayor's staff and city management staff have begun the work of working with the owners to begin the exterior inspections, where they've begun in some of the motels, to also get them to hire common security in motel drive, so that as they're pushing some of the criminal element, it's not just going to the next facility, they're beginning to implement and develop an operational guide, so folks are all operating the way they're legally required to. Security cameras are being put up. If you pass by there now, some of them have made some improvements on the exterior of their facilities. And this, of course, is in full collaboration with the police department, the captain of the Southwest District, and some monthly meetings that occur. So that's, for those who are willing and able to provide a better product, and one that's viable and appropriate, then that would continue. Option two is, there is a clear need. Some cities across the state have gone the path of converting motels to permanent housing. That, of course, requires that we still do significant renovations to those facilities. Motels weren't designed with the electrical systems, air conditioning systems for long-term permanent housing, but that can be an option. So we would look towards converting some of these uses and allowing owners to convert and repurpose these facilities for type of transitional housing, rapid rehousing, potentially shelters, or permanent affordable housing. The establishment, which we are discussing today, or we're proposing that gets adopted by the council, is the establishment of a motel inspection program. When the city's rental inspection program was developed, it rightfully focused on the apartments and the single-family, you know, units that were deteriorating to a point that, you know, we knew that we had more slum lords that we could tackle at first. This inspection program for the motels will work in the same approach. They would be inspected for adherence to health and safety standards. They would be required to address their code violations, remedy their projects. If not, there would be a progressive fine structure, and ultimately, if they weren't unable to improve or unwilling to improve their facilities, then they would be susceptible to receivership by the city of Fresno like we do further under the rental inspection program. Our goal is that as these properties, if they go down that path of receivership, which some properties, many properties have in the rental inspection program, that they would be prioritized and be sold and purchased for the purpose of developing new affordable housing in the area. Next steps, given that we are today initiating the process to change the Fresno Municipal Code, and that process is lengthy, and rightfully so, the next steps for us would be to develop the inspection program, also develop the staffing and the budget plan for it. It would then go to the Airport Commission for a hearing. After that, the Fresno City Council Commission for a hearing, ultimately return back to Fresno City Council for final adoption and execution. Again, council, our goal is to ensure that motels no longer become the epicenter of human trafficking and drug trafficking. I, I've had the opportunity to take a few folks, as noted in, in this slide, with us, and I do want to thank Councilmember Chavez and Councilmember Asparza, the police chief, the police captain, the city attorney, the city manager staff, who, and the mayor, who went with us a couple of months ago to tour eight of these facilities. And we saw for ourselves, we spoke to the tenants, we spoke to the owners. Staff has continuously organized the motel owners. I personally have addressed them three times to make it very clear that our hope is to get to this place where motels finally become safe, quality, and affordable housing for our communities. We have had some significant complaints from the residents in the area. I know we've made some, some minor improvements. For example, we redlined all the frontage of the motels, also redlined the back of the motel, so people are not pulling over and parking. Unfortunately, what that's created is, the Johns and the sex workers now go into the neighborhoods behind motel drive to engage in their criminal activity. So it's only pushing the issue back into the residential neighborhoods. That's why we need a comprehensive approach that begins when they, with a formal motel inspection program. If the council adopts this resolution today and initiates a process, you will see the final product in approximately six months, when we've gone through all the necessary legal steps to begin the execution of the motel inspection program. With that, I'll turn the floor over to my co-sponsors, Councilmember Soria and Asparza.
Council President, I'll go ahead and start, if that's okay.
Very good.
So, just, and I'm going to keep my remarks very brief. This is kind of, you know, initiating a process that I think has been well thought out, and that clearly points to a problem that we have in our community. For far too long, you know, families have continued to experience the lack of quality of affordable housing in our community, and just, this is just one more example of the critical need that we have to not only address the immediate existing motels, but I think that in need, the immediate need that we have to get serious about figuring out how we're going to build future affordable housing stock, and that is of quality here in the city of Fresno. That's been an issue that for the last four years I have been working on and hope to very shortly unveil a proposal that some of us have been working on to make sure that we have the resources to be able to build additional new housing and renovate existing housing stock that exists here in the city of Fresno. So I'm proud to be able to co-sponsor this and initiate a process, and welcome the opportunity for public debate as we continue to shape the program that will be required to be undertaken by these motels. Thank you.
Member Asparza?
I echo a lot of my co-sponsors. I had to say, I think this is a problem. It's long overdue and tackling here in the city of Fresno. And I just, I, I think this is very much the beginning of the conversation and the action, because as we take action today and as we go through this process, I know when we went on our tour, our afternoon long tour of the different motels, some of the worst motels here in Fresno, I mean, the, the living conditions were atrocious, the level of sort of activity around these places was unbelievable. And so, when you take on a problem this big, this monstrous, we can, you can be sure to expect some unintended consequences, displacement of folks. And that brings us back to the conversation on housing, affordable housing. And so, you know, this is, this might be step one, but I anticipate there will be, you know, more beyond vertical steps, some horizontal steps as well to, you know, put a real clamp on this. With that, I'm, I'm happy to support this, happy to be a co-sponsor. Thank you.
First of all, I want to commend Councilman Arias and Soria and Asparza for this effort. I think it's an important effort, and I think it's the right direction, absolutely. So I think this is a great effort and one that will have So I think this is a great effort and one that will have some very positive impacts. And so I will support this, but I do have some questions. When we're talking about, I know there's not a lot of details about the inspection part of it, and I'm going to support this in light of the fact, I didn't support the apartment inspection program. It's a different deal completely, but I'm wondering if you can, anything you can add in terms of what's involved, how many city employees, how will it work? Will it be through code enforcement, things of that sort? I'd like to know that.
Sure.
If you know any of that, because I know it's six months away and it'll, some of these details will get worked out.
Absolutely. Councilmember Bretfield, so the proposal does include the fact that this is, would be operated by the city code enforcement department under the direction of the city manager and the director of planning and development. So it would be led by code enforcement. We have not included in the resolution the fee for inspection because through the process of developing inspection program, we will determine the cost of inspecting these motels. I'm sure you can appreciate that they would be different than inspecting a single residential family unit, especially given if there's a history of multiple violations. So the cost of the inspections will be developed over the next six months. We do envision that the code enforcement department would be the lead and the one doing the inspections.
Okay, I mean, so, you know, I'm just concerned in terms of our code enforcement, as we all know historically, has not been doing as good a job as I think we all would like. That was discussed just a couple of weeks ago with the liquor alliances and the convenience stores, and there isn't a proactive inspection program. There's a reactive inspection program with those businesses. So, you know, I'm just concerned that we don't do the job with code enforcement that we need to do. This place certainly needs inspection. I think that's very clear. And the goal of this is really not about housing, right? It's about dealing with people who are engaged in criminal activity, selling drugs, human trafficking, all of the evils that are taking place within that culture.
It is a very complex issue. I think that's why for 40 years, folks have just shied away from, you know, confronting it head-on. There is an element of human trafficking, of drug trafficking, but there's also a lot of families with kids living in these motels, and they have grown up observing that as normal. So we have to be thoughtful that this is a default housing for the extremely poor in our city. So there's quite a bit of social and economic variables that we'll have to account for. And just to reassure the public, part of this process is if we ever get to a point of red tagging a facility, we would have to come up with a displacement plan to ensure that folks have housing before we, you know, put them out to the streets. We had a pretty significant experience with Hotel California. That does take a lot of, you know, staffing, political, and resource capital. Our hope, and that's how we've met with the motel owners several times, and the city has brought them to the table, is that they have clearly gotten the message that we're going to go down this path and you need to get on the train and improve your facilities or choose one of the other options available to them.
Okay. Again, I commend all three of you, and I know you've led the fight, Councilmember Arias, and so I want to recognize that, and I will certainly be very supportive of this. Thank you. We'll take this to the public. Anyone in the public want to come forward? Please do so. Give us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Afternoon, council. Kyle Lopez Schmidt. I want to commend the council for taking on this issue. I've grown up in this, in this district, in that neighborhood for, and for my whole life, this has been an ongoing problem, so I appreciate the leadership in trying to address it. I also want to thank you for mentioning the displacement issue. That was the main thing I was going to make a comment about was being sure that the humanity of the people that are living there is really, you know, protected and they're given the chance to have dignified housing in the process. On an organizational partnership level, I work for the Northern California Community Loan Fund, and we are a financer of affordable housing. So encourage you to include the affordable housing funding partners in the conversations that are leading to this plan and giving options for both the existing owners as well as whatever new owners might come out of this for financing the affordable housing to take their place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward? Please do so. Give us your name and address. We pull that microphone right down to you. There you go. Perfect.
I have to put it down pretty far. Too short for this. I'm Sarah Johnston. I'm the program manager for Fresno EOC's Central Valley Against Human Trafficking Project under Sanctuary and Support Services. And so we've been working alongside the mayor's office in the development of the mayor's initiative to combat human trafficking. And so I just want to thank you guys for taking this on and for your commitment. I know we did a proclamation back here in January, and I wanted to give a little bit of an update as far as numbers as how the motel and hotel industry intersects in human trafficking. Polaris Project put out a study in this past year that says that of the human trafficking cases, they did a study on 80% of the individuals that were trafficked for both labor and sex intersected with the hotel or motel industry in some way. And so this is a really big portion of what we, the work that needs to be done in order to combat human trafficking. And we know that in our city that there are certain areas that are, we see more of that happening. And so I want to thank you for your commitment and to make sure, you know, that we're available for any resources that you guys may need as well.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to comment on this? Please come forward. If you'll be kind enough to give us your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, my name is Gonzalo Ramula. You know me for a few times I've been here. My question and complaint is that although you are being missing or ignoring senior citizens better than us, then there are part in the street also, the little houses, the Pabalelo House that they call Shells, there's been more than one BA and senior citizens sitting there in those houses and not being placed in affordable housing. You're missing that one. Also, you're missing many ladies between 70s and 80s and they're on the streets that also needed housing. Please do something. And at the same time, if you can, please do something for one or two persons like me because we need a place to stay. I'm doing community work at West Care 611 Belmont. I don't charge no penny. I don't get no penny except just a few donuts and coffee. That's all I get paid. Now, will you please do something with the community of persons like me? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come?
I'm sorry, one last comment. Please don't send me to a dead end. The staff of your office, Mr. Arias, send me to a dead end, then I didn't got nothing. On the contrary, they laugh on my face. It's EOC and also SMAPs.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to comment? Please come forward. Come on down. We could have your name and address for the record. Thank you.
I'm Loza 936 Fulton Avenue for now. Anyway, 99. Now, I know, I've seen a bunch of construction and stuff like that, housing and all that stuff, you know, but, but yeah, I'm not disagreeing. But don't forget rest stops. Traveling, remember, tourists, we need rest stops on that 99. I don't see no rest stops. A nice one in Fresno, you know, a nice rest stop. Do you guys see any nice rest stops? I see them in Oregon. I've seen them in Washington. I've seen them all over the freaking place. But we don't got a nice good one in Fresno, do we? I don't know. I'm going to have to find out. I don't think so.
Thank you. Please give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Brandon News Vegas, 713 East Andrews Avenue, District 7. I wanted to commend you and thank you all for, for this effort. I know that it's very much needed. I just gave a ride to an elderly woman who is staying in one while she's awaiting getting long-term housing. And so I know that there is, I recognize that that is a place where for some people, that's the only place to go. So I appreciate looking thoughtfully into what we can do to improve those conditions. And I wanted to thank you and share my, lend my support. I did have one question that popped into my brain as I was listening to this is if there might be a possibility for those who, property owners who are willing to work with the city that want to make improvements, that might have, need assistance, if there might be any options for getting any sort of assistance in improving their facilities? But that was the only one, only thing I came up with. I, again, thank you so much for, for this effort and for all the work you are, you're putting into this.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please come up. All right, we'll close. Public comment, is there a motion?
Yes, Councilor President, I'd like to make a motion, but before that, I just want to say thank you to the city manager, their staff, and the mayor for being very supportive of this proposal. And we do have quite a bit of work going forward. We have had interest from nonprofit, affordable housing developers, private developers, financiers, just plenty of folks who are willing to take this area that's 80% vacant and substandard for any of those folks living there and make it something that folks deserve in this city. So as we go forward, we'll be engaging quite a bit of people because we know that some property owners have already showed interest in not, in wanting to turn over their properties for somebody else could, you know, make that, those improvements. So with that, I could make a motion to approve.
Motion by Member Arias, second by Member Soria. Is there any opposition? Passes 6-0. 4C, a resolution supporting Senate Bill 18. If we could resolve this quickly, we'll go to the 3 o'clock at 3:13. Where the sponsors like to speak on this or make a motion?
I'll make a motion, but...
Motion by Member Soria, second by Member Arias. Anyone in the public wish to come?
This is essentially very straightforward bill. It's going through the legislative process. It's SB 18. It's titled Keep Californians Housed Act. Again, very, you know, similar to the issue that we're discussing to make sure that the cities and local municipalities have resources so that people are not getting displaced, especially those that are of lower income and are in need of affordable housing. So the 10 major, or other 10 major cities from around here, including the city of Bakersfield, their mayors have signed on to a letter to support. I believe Senator Skinner's office just called me yesterday to let me know that our mayor has said that he is in support also of SB 18. So I'm glad that he is on board with this, but I'll make a motion to submit a letter, a resolution in support of the bill.
Screen is clear. Anyone from the public want to comment on this item? Please come forward. Take your time.
That was actually one of the main things that got my attention that I wanted to come. I wanted to, again, thank you guys so much for support for this. We, and I appreciate that on your resolution, it mentions that many people are one crisis away from being, without housing. I've come across a lot of people in Fresno who had a crisis and that's how they, they are, end up being homeless, and we've been dealing with a lot of people who are having a very difficult time being able to get housing with a housing voucher once they get assistance. And so we know that prevention would be huge. So thank you so much for your support of this.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, public comment is closed. And a motion by Member Arias, Member Soria, second by Member Arias. Is there any opposition? Passes 6-0. On the closed session item...
Council President, can I just ask the city clerk if she could submit this to Senator Skinner's office for the record, please?
Okay, let's go to the closed session, item 5B. That's been requested that it be removed. So that resolves any closed session items. And then next is unscheduled communication.
Counselor President, just for clarification, we just booked a coffee with the city manager. We can do that over coffee. I don't think we need to take up the whole council's time.
Okay, I wasn't sure if council wanted an update. That was, that was the intent in the closed session, but if you want to just...
Up to you.
It's up to council. We're happy to present something in closed session. Otherwise, I'm happy to meet with you all one-on-one or whoever is interested.
I think Member Arias indicated a one-on-one would be satisfactory him if it is to you all. Okay, good.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to unscheduled communication. This is where any member of the public can speak on any issue or item within the jurisdiction of the council. Please come forward if you have an unscheduled comment. I have a card here from Stephen Wilson. Stephen, if you're here, on music education resolution. I don't see Stephen. Anyone else wish to comment on any item that the council has jurisdiction on? Seeing none? I'm sorry. Help me out here. Sorry, Mr. Love, I missed the, I missed your card. Mr. Love, please come forward, and you will have three minutes. Please give us your name and address. Thank you.
My name's David Love, number 4. Address, I'm a true Saint of God's Angel, I'm a Saint at 100 in the New Testament. The address is 5705 East 110, Apartment 205, 93727, from City District Number 5. A week ago, the guidance from high above, we're talking about Caleb Ministry, God's Angel, I'm a Saint, there was lightning, a race, 12, a race 4, meaning that Paul James Dark World Satan, her organization, of Kongs, of those six numbers of Satan, 55556666, of the only one, they're still trying to block. They're still trying to challenge God, Father from Heaven, Lord Jesus Christ, my heavenly birth, heavenly Father. Number 4, number 4, the kingdom of heaven, the heavenly earth, the one universe, Jesus Jesus Heaven. They're still trying to make a lot of audios that are unclear. There's another Satan house that's right next to our Satan house, Clermont 408, a voicing all the way to Washington DC, also to Sacramento, and also to the United States of America, and also to GV wire that needs to wire down because they're representing. You guys may be laughing, but from Caleb Ministry, God's Angel, I'm a Saint at 100 in the New Testament of the New Convention, Zori, Aureus, you guys may be laughing, but I do know about Alex and Terry that's trying to steal Washington DC of the next president of the United States of America. They're doing their so-called Dark World Satan stuff to possess Nancy Pelosi and also They're working with this baby Satan, I'll call him Jang Jong, at age 40. I, David Love, number 4, they've been trying to control me and trying to make me, they're trying to do a lot of Dark World Satan stuff. My sister Katie Caldwell knows about it on 91.1 radio station during the evening hours all the way to the morning hours. Do not listen to it. As Alex and Terry cannot win in our scare, let me light the way with 429, the golden Elter airplane that fly the highest side by side.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Appreciate your comments. Your time is expiring.
I want to schedule one hour so I can voice all the way to Washington DC so Washington DC can listen.
Okay.
We're talking about Jesus Christ on the heavenly earth.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Pocapio, I'll meet with you after this.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else, unscheduled communication? This is the time, if you wish to discuss anything, okay? I have no cards. I see no one coming forward. We will close that portion. We have one item left. It's a 3 o'clock item, and this is a workshop scheduled by Councilmember Chavez regarding a partnership request, and the floor is yours. Mr. Barasa, would you like to come up and make the presentation? Give us your name and address.
Yes. My name is Jose Leon Barasa. I'm the CEO of the Southeast Fresno Economic, Community Economic Development Association. I wish to express our appreciation to Councilmember Luis Chavez for placing this item on the, on your council's... I wish to express our appreciation to Councilmember Luis Chavez for placing this item on the, on your council's agenda. And I want to thank you, President Caprioglu, for giving us this opportunity to address this very important matter. I would also like to thank three of our board members, so of our board directors, Andy Hansen Smith, Nellinetti, Sylvia Sanchez, and our legal advisor, Pat Brown. Thank you very much for being with us. The discussion about the need for more parks in our community has been discussed very much during recent years. Your Fresno Parks Master Plan, adopted on December 14, 2017, identifies and documents the shortage of parks in our city. Studies show that low-income communities of color are disproportionately affected by higher rates of health problems and often have limited access to physical activity settings such as parks, playgrounds, trails, community gardens, and other open spaces. Proposition 68 is a great opportunity to address this problem. One of the other very positive factors we have in the community, there happen to be three that come to my mind. One is that the city of Fresno and our community already owns 49 acres of land that's readily available to be improved in Southeast Fresno. Second, because we want to have a strong component of soccer on this project in light of the need to generate revenue, because obviously there's always going to be a discussion as to how will we pay for the maintenance and operation of this facility? Well, soccer is a growing sport. Unfortunately, unfortunately, our city has not been able to keep up with that demand, with that need, with the, the very popular sport. And thirdly, another very important factor is the fact that we have a community in our city that cares and a community of nonprofit organizations that are willing to participate in promoting a more healthy environment to promote quality of life. A little bit about, about the, the site that we're talking about is located at 2155 South Peach Avenue. The total size is 49 acres. It has a northern parcel of 18.5 acres divided by a railroad. And on the southern portion, there's 30.5 acres. This parcel was donated to the city of Fresno 12 years ago by the U.S. National Park Service. So we want to work together with our wonderful city to build a park together, not just, not just with our municipality, but also with the residents of our community. And as I share with you, there has been a lot of help already in developing, in, in the start of a development of this site. Let us join forces. And in fact, it's interesting that we already have. Last February 2018, your council unanimously approved an agreement for the improvement of the 18 acres on another part of this site. And that was to include a cleanup of the site, pruning of trees, removing weeds, and planting 120 trees and 60,000 square feet of turf. Also installation of an irrigation system, maintaining the improvements for three years that we're supposed to sign a maintenance agreement. And the target date for completion is going to be June 30th, 2019. Here we see some of the help of volunteers. We've had quite a few volunteers helping us clean up that site. And you'll see, and we're very grateful to many churches from Northern Fresno that have actually come and helped us. But there are many other groups that have helped us. We had 553 volunteers on the, there you go, on the, on the, on this, in a period of approximately 12 months. And we had 945 hours. And we estimate the value of that help coming from the community of $40,000, $40,845. Subceda has been on the lead in this process, but we had tremendous help from the Roosevelt Youth Soccer League, the California Youth Soccer Association, every neighborhood partnership, and all those various churches that have come to help us at different times during, during the year. Even the Central Valley Boy Scouts participated, and the Building Healthy Communities Organization have also been there with us. A lot of organizations have given us support with donations and contributions. Recently, the more recent donation came from Bayarta Markets and also Erie Tech USA. You know, we need drip irrigation system for the trees. And those wonderful people of Erie Tech don, donating the materials. And we, we feel that all of that is possible. It, it takes a lot of hard work to be visiting all those folks. But there are other groups that have helped us also with funding and with, with participation, including the Fresno Latino Rotary, Latino Peace Officer Association, the California Endowment. Channel 30 ABC is very supportive. The Big Fresno Fair has donated facilities for events. Pond Wonderful, Donage Sales, Home Depot, Lowe's, all those organizations in one way or another have been helping us. And of course, our council member Chavez has been very helpful, supportive. And Jim Giovino, you know all those people. I'll just give you their names. John Leal, Joaquina Ramblah, Carol Goldsmith, Valerie Davis. And thank you, Valerie. I just saw that she arrived a couple of minutes ago. Nathan Maxig, Tim Lyles, Vesterarias, and many thousands of folks in the community. And so far, if we add up all the revenues, all the resources that have been generated along with the volunteers, we probably have generated around $200,000. But we still, before the end of the, of the project, which will be around June 30th, we intend to generate more, more contributions. One of the nice things is that we're willing to do events like a concert at the fairgrounds. The Pall-Pall Theater, we're going to use it to do a fundraiser. We're going to have performers and all of that takes a lot of hard work, but we're willing to do whatever it takes to generate the money that is necessary to continue to improve this wonderful facility. The conceptual plan, unfortunately, we're only able to get, this is the 18 acres. And what you see there is a trail with a lot of trees that we are going to have that neighbors will be able to walk around, a, a trail that we're going to call it the Wellness Trail because it promotes good health. And if folks can walk around, if folks can exercise or even ride a bicycle, obesity will be eliminated, at least by the folks that take advantage of those facilities. And we, this is the area along that trail where we're planning to plant 100 and, I'm sorry, 85 trees, but in total it'll be 120. And, and, and there'd be other locations, but we're going to have the canopy effect of having wonderful shade and, and encouraging people to use that facility. A little bit about, and by the way, the map or the conceptual plan is in the middle of the brochure, the green brochure that you have there. That's a more complete overview of the entire area. We're proposing to use about 75.
Jose, if I may, where exactly are the soccer fields here?
I'm sorry?
Where are the soccer fields?
And those are on the, on the, on the southern portion. That 30 acres. And if you look in the middle, the, the, the conceptual plan in the, in the brochure, you'll see the entire, the entire map. And, but I would tell you that for this round, for phase one, we're targeting to build only four soccer fields. Ultimately, we could build eight soccer fields, but because of the budgetary limitations, we, we are only planning to do, in fact, you, you can see on the project scope for phase one, you can see the emphasis on outdoor activities like the, the four adult soccer fields that will be to the eastern side of the 30, the 30 acres. And we also are planning to include on the 18 soccer, on the 18 parcel, a foot sale court that could be convertible for basketball and volleyball. And there are total of four. Also, we already have the operation of a community garden that will continue to operate without any change. We're proposing to have a veterans memorial garden because in our community, we have a lot of veterans and we believe that is very appropriate that we express our appreciation to veterans for their contribution to defend our country. Picnic areas, something as basic as, as that and, and the purpose, the all-purpose trail that I discussed, playground areas, landscape buffer, a dog park, some limited office space and maintenance and storage buildings. And we'll try to use as much as we can from the existing facilities. A concessions, two concession stands, one on the 18 acre side and the other one on the 30 acre side, adequate parking and restrooms. That, those are the, the components for phase one. That is what we would like to fund with our grant application that we are, will be talking to you about. There are future phases that will require additional resources, like it, it will be nice to eventually have a community center, a multipurpose hall, softball diamonds, indoor foot sale facilities, outdoor soccer fields, whatever we're able to, to include, shower and locker room facilities, and, and a maintenance shop. Those are things that are coming up later, and those are things that are more expensive that, that we'll be proposing for the future. In terms of the resources that are generated through the, the, the grant funding for phase one, under Proposition 68, we are planning to apply for $4.9 million, even though it is possible to go up as high as 8.5. But we just wanted to get a, a, a more realistic number. And also the track record of the, of the funding of those proposals seem, seem to indicate that the highest they go is around $5 million. So, so we're trying to kind of take into account the track record of, of that process. And CAL FIRE, the CAL FIRE grant in the amount of $400,000 is mainly for the planting of trees and, and other irrigation systems that would be necessary for, for that, for that component. Subceda will continue to raise funds with all our partners and, and seeking in-kind contributions. In regard to the possible participation by the city of Fresno, we have some ideas that we wanted to suggest. As you know, the city of Fresno has, continues to collect park development fees from housing projects. There've been a lot of homes built in Southeast Fresno, a lot of apartments. And we would like to see a portion of that revenue come back to Southeast Fresno. And with this opportunity to do this Southeast Fresno Regional Park and Soccer Complex, we would like to get some allocation of that money to us. There's also the possibility, and I don't know if this is possible. When I worked for the county, we used to do that, but maybe it's not possible. But I wanted to suggest that, that the fees for building permits, plant checks, and project inspection be handled by the city of Fresno. When I say handled, be, be paid for by the city of Fresno. And I, I know that you, you really cannot waive it because you're incurring an expense. So somebody has to pay it. So we just suggested the city, in, in the partnership, we're proposing that the city assume that responsibility. There's also the widening of Peach Avenue that's coming up. And we believe that the upside improvements for this project should be part of this project. You know, in, in front of the, the regional park, there are some improvements. And, and typically, I remember when I worked for the county, the, the, the funding agency or the agency that's implementing the project handles those things. But I suppose if we were talking about private developments, and this is really more like a government development because we are partnering with the city of Fresno in the development of this facility. And we are asking that, that you help us. Subceda and Fresno State would, would be involved in the development of the grant application. And, but we would be happy to present it back to city staff for review to ensure that, that we address all, all critical areas. We did a, a, moving on to maintenance and operations, that we believe that the estimated cost of this facility, once it is, is completed, will be around $420,000. And that would include the, the need for some paid staffing. The volunteers obviously would not cost anything, but we may need to have tools and supplies for them. Maintenance and repairs, marketing and promotions to be able to generate revenues from the soccer tournaments and, and, and the other events. There has to be a, a promotional effort. Electricity, water, insurance, community garden that you're already making a contribution to. I believe it's something around the neighborhood of $60,000, but it may be less, I don't know. And then obviously, security is a very important concern because folks, the neighbors, they all say that they're hoping that we are going to be able to, to address this issue. And on the, on the list of activities that could generate revenues, we have soccer tournaments. And the soccer tournament is, it's an activity that the soccer teams or leagues that are helping us with the operations and management of this facility will be involved in the organizing of those events. But then from time to time, there may be some clubs, they themselves may want to do the tournaments. And we will need to figure out what the rental cost would be for something like that. Something that is very needed is a soccer academies. There are some already in the community, but obviously that's a revenue generating activity. Concession stands, the concert dimension at the fairground. And we will continue to seek cash contributions. In fact, we're having conversations with very important businesses in the community that are very interested in helping us. And then professional pro bono services, materials and supplies, as, as I've demonstrated already with the drip irrigation system that was donated by, by Erie Tech. And, and then you, we have already the revenue of the, the community garden that's already coming in. The Proposition 68 requirements targets low-income communities, disadvantaged, underserved communities. And we feel that we have a very strong case in that area in Southeast Fresno. There's no local match required. Total funds available statewide are $650 million. And as I indicated, the maximum amount that, that you may apply per project is 8.5 million. Our application is 4.9. And the project must be operational upon conclusion. In other words, you have to finish the project. You cannot just improve an area and, and not, not worry about the need to operate the, the facility. And obviously, the, the partnerships with other community-based organizations will continue. And, and we have actually signed agreements with, with a few, with the Fresno Latino, I'm sorry, the Fresno Latino Rotary Club, with, with Central La Familia, with Roosevelt Youth Soccer League. And we were looking for other partners that are willing to play an active role in the management of the facilities and the operation. One of the requirements is that most of the environmental work be completed. And they, the, the, the point. And they, the, the point system for the granting of, of points that will make you more competitive requires that you have a minimum of five community meetings for the environmental review. So what we are asking to you is that you authorize a city-Subsida partnership for the development and joint filing of a $4.9 million Proposition 68 park grant application and a $400,000 CAL FIRE grant application for the construction of Phase One of the Southeast Fresno Regional Park and Soccer Complex project. And then you direct staff to explore ways to provide some seed money for initial environmental and design costs, and some initial transitional costs during the first three years of operations. And our goal is that ultimately, this facility become self-sufficient, that it can be funded with the, with the revenues it generates. Questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
As I indicated at the outset, this is, I see there's a lot of supporters in the audience, but this is considered what we call a workshop, which means there'll be no public comment. It's the presentation and the reaction or response from the council. To sponsor this item is Member Chavez, so Member Chavez, you have the floor.
Yep. Thank you, President Capriolio. I want to thank you, Mr. Barasa, for the work you've been doing. I think everybody in our community knows you've been the driving force of this site, the park, along with your board, with Andy, with Pat, with all the partners that we have. I even see Coach Jaime hiding back there. We had a conversation not that long ago about futsal and what that means for our community. And, and you know, I think you know that we're supportive of the park. And so I'm going to be scheduling a meeting with staff, yourself, to go over the proposal and authorize that Prop 68 grant application that you're working on. I know there's still a little bit of work to do on the environmental, the design, and a couple other odds and ends. But should this application not be successful the first round, I'm going to put it on my priority list for the second round. And then I also want to put it on the docket and flag it for the conversation that we're about to have for the park public safety bond conversation in our city. But I do want to thank you for the work you've been doing. Gabriel has been a workhorse out there. I see him sometimes driving out there with the lawnmower. And you've done a great job of building those collaborations. The part that I'm really interested in, and we talked a little bit about it the day before yesterday, is the workforce development piece component that I think we can have with the local conservation corps. I know you've been in conversations with them on helping with some of the maintenance. I'd love to help you on really solidifying that partnership, because I think there'll be a lot of other grant opportunities that come up with that. So also, I did speak with the administration yesterday, and we are working on getting the documentation for the 1.3 million that we discussed on the insurance money for the site, along with UGM fees and what that looks like for the area. But more than happy to partner with you. And what kind of timeline are you looking at for, for, for the process? I know you mentioned Professor, is it Professor Keith over at Fresno State that's going to be a partner as well?
Yes.
Okay.
The deadline for the filing of the Prop 68 grant is August 5. So basically, we are working already in preparation of the application. It's a very intense process. And, and obviously, because there is a lot of competition, we have to do a very good job.
So I'm going to have my office staff coordinate with the administration, with yourself. Maybe we could set something up next week. I think the sooner, the earlier, the better.
Yes.
And so we'll go ahead and get started on that. But thank you very much for yourself, all the partners. I see a lot of the soccer clubs that are out here in the community. I think we got a great opportunity to do some good for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Chavez. Member Arias?
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. And as you know, I'm extremely supportive of pursuing this project. I also just wanted to, since we're in a workshop forum, I wanted to make sure that, just like this 49 acres and any other proposal by the community that proposes to draw down some of the state dollars in Prop 68, that the city honor those proposals, because we need all the help that we can get with drawing down as many state dollars as possible to improve our parks. So as we're considering this item, we also should be open to the other parks that the nonprofit organizations are actively pursuing and applying for. So with that, thank you for bringing this forward.
Member, I'll have the city, Assistant City Manager punch up first, and Member Soria will follow. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. As was mentioned, the first round that we'll be applying for is due in the August timeframe. And so that puts us under quite a tight timeframe to get work done. Earlier on consent, we had a few projects that we had mentioned as priorities chosen by the city to move forward. I would have some concerns about any environmental and concept work that would be ready in time for this round of proposal. But I would look that it might be a good opportunity for future rounds or other, other funding opportunities through Prop 68.
Let's vet that at the meeting that we have next week, because I think there's some really innovative partnerships that Mr. Barasa's come up with.
And I do want to say that particularly soccer is a huge need. We just would need to somehow figure out how to pull the funding, not only for the capital investment, but for the ongoing operations together.
Member Soria?
Thank you, Council President. Just want to echo my support, you know, I want to thank folks, Jose, for being here and for giving his presentation and giving us an update of all the work that you guys have done. I think that demonstrates that you guys are committed to continue building the support and leveraging resources. I think that what we see here is an opportunity to continue to augment the public and private partnerships, which we know are so critical in our community, given the limited resources. But also, I, you know, I want to just say that I'm supportive of us figuring out how we continue to submit more applications. I know that we have issues with just capacity, because we're limited with, with our staffing. But if there are opportunities where we can make sure that we're submitting as many applications to draw down those Prop 68 dollars, which we're all paying into, and so I think that it's time that Fresno gets its fair share of those dollars, given that we're one of the largest cities with the most deficit in parks, and in particular, in our southern, the southern part of the, of the city, which we know has a tremendous need. And so I want to thank you guys. I want to thank the folks here in the audience that have been here patiently, that have continued to come to voice your support for parks, for continuing on, on the fight. Many of you guys were out there during this last election cycle, supporting the measure that unfortunately didn't get the approval that it needed, so that we could get additional local resources. But again, thank you for staying in the fight and for pushing us so that you guys also get to enjoy the types of amenities that you guys deserve in your, in your neighborhoods. Thank you.
And I just have one other comment. A caution. We not only need the capacity to apply for these grants, but we also need the capacity to execute the grants once we get them. So I want everybody to keep that in mind.
And with that, Assistant City Manager, it's my hope that since the budget hasn't been publicized to the council, that the staff would make those recommendations in your proposed budget, so that we don't have to pick between applying for two parks versus one park, maintaining one park versus the other. You know, this is, we are at the height of economic activity in our city, the lowest unemployment in decades. If we can't find a way to prioritize parks in your upcoming proposed budget, then we should just declare that we have no intent to do so going forward. So I would hope that your proposed budget reflects that we need more staffing.
Okay, folks, I think that's the end of the workshop, and I believe it's the end of our agenda for this day. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate your participation and your presence during our meeting. Thank you very much, and we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Paul Cabrio, just wait, just one. Kellen Ministry?